All right, everybody. It is six thirty. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Our first order of business is our first public comment section. We'll have fifteen minutes. If you have anything that you want to contribute tonight, you can step up to the mic. Just let us know your name, where you live. One, one's. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda item number three is agenda review. We do have a note about a dishwasher that I think we're going to incorporate into the discussion about the current budget situation. And we have something else that you said we need to do for consent?
Yes, we have the wood chip bids. There should have been a number one next to the consent items. You've had the sheet in your drive for a while, but we just didn't list it as a consent.
Okay, any other additions?
Yes. I would like to add an agenda for the school safety plan. Just pursuant to all of the shootings, I think the schools are working on, you know, relooking at those. And I would like to just touch base on what the status is on that for our district. And I have a few others, but I'm just waiting for my computer to decide that it wants to open up the file I've asked it to open.
Well, we'll add that one as EF.
Okay.
I think if I remember, superintendent evaluation and was it the long-term planning or what they call strategic planning?
Yes, it was hiring the New Hampshire School Board Association to help us prepare a strategic plan. And yes, performing an evaluation of the superintendent at tonight's meeting.
Okay, so I'm going to add those as G and H, obviously time permitting with our fancy three-hour time limit.
Thank you.
Anything else? Excuse me, okay.
I want to ask is nothing has been added to non-public. So if we kind of run up against the time, or do you want to do your appointments and resonate? Yeah.
Just have a quick question, Andy. Under E, goal setting, process, and date, I took that as strategic planning, that we would discuss whether we were going to go out to bid or who we were going to use for facilities. Are you talking about something else there?
Yeah, we can roll that. Well, so that's just, that was meant for just the board's goals for next year, which we do annually. But, I mean, similar topic, so we can certainly roll that into E.
Okay.
Good? Okay, then next we have minutes. We've got two of them to look at. The first is the business meeting from May third.
Motion to approve the two sets of minutes.
One second.
Right, discussion around May third or May seventeen.
I have a couple of thoughts on, questions on one of them. One from May third. Around the question of SAU board and opening up the AREA agreement. It says that the SAU board didn't vote. Should that be the AREA instead? And then also on AREA committee report, committee members, it says next week maybe. I wasn't sure what that meant.
There was a, what was it?
And then on budget update, FY twenty-two budget update, it says a retrospective has been held. Brian Seaworth and Clint Hanson shared information. I don't know if that happened previously, but it didn't happen at the meeting. So I was confused of where that came from.
Yeah, I had just mentioned the NBC had a after meeting, you know, like a month after the meeting, they had held a retrospective. So I think that was just in reference to that meeting. Discussion, just so that people knew what was talked about there.
After we can approve the minutes, I just have a couple of thoughts that I want to share. I don't know if you want to do it before or after we.
Yeah, let's finish the motion first and then we can, remind me though, in case I forget to come back to you. Any other corrections on May three or May seventeen? And if not, are we okay with approving as amended?
Yeah.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Then all in favor of approving the minutes of May third and May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions. Fantastic. Stacy?
I think Sandy does an amazing job of taking minutes way beyond what is expected for the minutes for the meeting. But I also think that these are a great way for outreach for the public to see what's happening. And I don't feel like because they're so thorough, they're not necessarily readable to the general public. And I'm just wondering, not going to the point of just having discussion, voting, maybe if it can be written in like bullets or something that can be easier to read for people. Just something I want to put out there to start thinking about how we could do a better job of making that, that people can go to the minutes and read them quickly and want to be going to them to look at them.
Okay, does anybody else have thoughts on that? If not, scroll it away. Go ahead. Yeah, and I don't know if it makes it easier or harder for Sandy to go back and bullet point things rather than doing a full. I'm up for whatever, like we've got the video and we've got the RSA way past covered. So I'm pretty comfortable with what Sandy wants to do. But if there's an agreement that makes it easier for everybody, I'm certainly open to change also.
My input would be that paring them down a little bit, I think, would make them more consumable. And, but it would be contingent on having that video because I do think it's a super helpful reference for someone who missed a meeting or, like myself, doesn't have a loctite memory and sometimes needs to go back and review things.
Okay, so I mean, we can always talk about that again, even at goal setting or whatever. About all the processes and things, is this going in now or do I just get everything? So yeah, so everybody, you know, give it some thought and we can, we can talk about details. Maybe next time around. All right, anything else around minutes before we move on? Cool, okay. Then agenda item number five is our board reports. We don't have Braden with us, so we'll move on to Mr. Coughlin.
Thank you. Over the last couple of weeks, the facilities department has been busy supporting year-end activities. So this past week specifically at PA, we had many class days, awards nights, accumulation with the graduation last night. All went well. The crew did very well. Our crew did very well, but I have to give recognition to the entire PA staff in that point. Everybody comes together as a family, gets it done specifically under the leadership of Doc Morris. So great week there. Now we escalate that into Three Rivers coming up. We have graduation coming up, field day, as well as Hill School Field Day coming up, which we'll be supporting. We're busy coordinating summer projects, our asbestos abatement, our floor redos, to name some of them. The library renovation, the new shelving units, new furniture, et cetera. So we're busy getting those dates on calendar. All that stuff's going to happen pretty quickly, start happening pretty quickly right after the last day of school. And then lastly, a short one this week, but we just lost a very valued member of our department, Ashley Gladu. She was with us four years. I'd be reminisce if I didn't publicly thank her. She did great for us. She did great for the athletics department here at PA. And we're very excited to see her grow within our new role at the SAU. So thank you, Ashley.
Awesome. Questions for Josh? I'd say thanks. I've gotten to, this is my favorite time of year to be on the board because I get to go to a lot of the year-end stuff and award ceremony looked great. I know that ballpark takes care of a decent amount of stuff for graduation, but I know you guys are there working too. So we definitely appreciate everything looking tip-top for all of these different ceremonies. Not to mention all the time that you've put in with RFPs and stuff too. So thanks. Gene, SAU board, exec board. Fun, fun. Okay, AREA. I'm on that. I missed the meeting. Yeah, I think we already did. There hasn't been a meeting since last time we reported out last time. There was a meeting, but it was fairly uneventful, other than the declination of a vote on the AREA agreement. So then we'll move on to principals reports. We'll start with John. Wow, she moved over there, so. I think that was her plan all along.
Okay, we have, you know, this time of year, we always have a ton going on, but I'm always, not always, I, since we haven't done it for three years, it's just, you forget how exhausting it is and how much stuff is going on, but it's also really, really exciting. Tomorrow night, we have our outdoor concert at Three Rivers, six P M. I anticipate about two hundred musicians playing. I didn't know who shows up. And considering we have three hundred and twenty in the building, two hundred is pretty remarkable. We also, Josh had mentioned, we have field day coming up. We haven't done field day in three years, the typical one. And so we do spend the entire day outside and our phys ed department, Brian Greeley and Sue Hutchinson, it's pretty impressive what they put together. So the whole building is, goes to stations and they put them, I think the theme this year is a granite state, and so it'll have something to do with New Hampshire. And they go to all these different stations and they're, they're really kind of like backyard fun stuff that maybe kids don't do anymore. Sack races, you know, stuff like that, just kind of really fun stuff. And the kids really like it. As long as they wear sunblock, we're in pretty good shape. Our baseball and softball teams are playing today. They might be done. I have not heard. This would be the second round, so if they win today, they'll go to championships. So we'll see what happens there. I hate to bring it up, but I'm going to win anyway. SAS is over. And we did, we did make that threshold of ninety-five percent. So that was, we are getting a lot of the reports in, so at a later date, I will be giving you some data on what all that looks like. Pals is at it again. They did bus appreciation this morning. So they set up a table with balloons and a little kind of gift basket for each one of the bus drivers they presented to when they came up Three Rivers. They had chalk written on the ground and I can't say enough about this group of families that support the schools. They are, it's exceptional. And they, you know, can't go unnoticed of what that means to people. And, you know, it's just these small little thank yous that go a lot further than many things do. We also have our seventh grade math teacher, Deirdre Martin, is just about finished with her planetarium, which is, it's pretty amazing to watch. The kids take cardboard and they make triangles and they have to measure all the triangles. They have to be perfect. And then they, we have these big clips that they put together, bend the cardboard, they paint the inside black, and they put it together and makes a planetarium. Then inside they do lights and all this stuff. And Patty saw one a few years ago. And it will be there Monday, so, well, we have field day, so I don't know if you can come and see it. But it's really exciting. It's really, it takes up most of the classroom. But what I get excited about is seeing kids that are typically maybe a little quieter in the classroom, they shine in this type of thing. They really get their hands dirty. They love it. They take over and they, you know, when some of them are usually kind of quiet. So it's really good exercise for kids to go through. And they learn quite a lot about triangles. And they have to be perfect or so they don't fit. So it's, it's kind of fun. I think that's about it.
Thanks. Questions for Mr. Mercer? Okay, we'll go Dr. Morris.
Evening, everyone. We've had a busy few weeks. We had our graduation last night that went very well. The weather was great. That certainly always helps. And graduated a hundred and fifty-five seniors and very pleased with how that went. We, on Saturday, were fortunate enough to be invited to the Eddie's Dinner. Patty and Andy were also there. And Pembroke Academy was awarded a special recognition for innovation learning for our work with competency-based education. And we were very happy to be able to do that. We, Stacy and I, were part of a trustees scholarship meeting about three weeks ago. The Pembroke Academy trustees awarded thirty thousand dollars worth of scholarships to seven current students and eight alumni. And we were very happy to be able to do that. And sadly, a few weeks ago, I'm sure you've all heard, but we lost Chief Lane and was fortunate enough to be asked to speak at his service and talk about the partnership that he developed between the Pembroke Police Department and the Pembroke School District. And that, you know, very simply, the work that he put in and the vision and leadership he had, you know, decades ago continues on now. So, you know, I was happy to be able to do that. End of year, we are one grade level down now and wrapping up with the underclassmen. We have a few more days of traditional schedules and then we start getting into our finals. The design is so that we don't have, students don't have more than two finals a day. So we kind of taper off and we do have a day at the end of the year for students to schedule time to work with teachers for recovery, reassessment, that sort of a thing. So rolled that out last month to parents and we did it last year too and anticipating that that will go well.
Thanks. Questions? Okay. It was scary.
All right. We have kind of a lot of the same things going on end of year. Last week, we had the seniors walk through. It was a very, very special moment. There were a lot of tears on the teachers' part because I got to see a lot of the kids coming in. It was amazing. It was absolutely phenomenal. Then the kids got, the seniors got to walk around and kind of touch base with some of their teachers from the past. So that was wonderful. And then earlier in the week, we had sixth graders come up and meet with our first graders for Book Buddies. And that was another thing that was just absolutely amazing. So we were really lucky in the span of a week to have kids from Three Rivers as well as PA in the building. I know personally, that was a great thing to watch. We have field trips coming up in the last couple of days. We have field day on the fifteenth. It's very similar to TRS, except I think our theme is Encanto, which we're all familiar with. So the kids are going to have a blast with that. We are ending out the year for us. We did finish our SAS testing. The last one was today. Lots of excitement over that. But then tomorrow, we meet in our data teams. It's an all-day affair. We meet with each grade level. We review all of our benchmarking data, look for growth patterns, look for anything that can set us up for next year as well, any way we can help support kids from day one. So that's kind of what we're doing to end the year out. Something that brought a huge smile to my face today, I just want to shout out. I went into our iLab and there was a robot fashion show. And there is, I can set the scene, there is a little curtain about this high, a stage. There are lights and it's like there is a runway. And the kids all created a, some form of dressing up of the robots. And then they had to program the robot to go walk down the stage, turn around and come back. And then the kids were also, there was another one with the xylophone playing, that it was programmed to play the xylophone. The kids loved it. It's really cool. So that was something that was really fun to witness. I think that's pretty much it for us.
Cool, thank you very much. Any questions?
I do, I did, minute she brought it up. We had the seniors also at Three Rivers and we had, what, Dan, forty, fifty kids come and they walked through the building and we had people in tears, including the seniors. Amy Montero had found their sixth grade video of their environmental camp. And so we had that on a screen playing and they just couldn't leave it. They, it was, so that was the first time we've done it and that will be something we need to continue.
That stuff is great. My son remembers being on the elementary end of Book Buddies like it was yesterday. And then last week, he got to do the other side and he's just, that stuff is awesome. Cool. Any other questions for administrators before we move on? Thank you all. Next is consent agenda. So we do have a note in our drives about the wood chip pricing. Josh, is there anything you want to share about that?
Just, we set it out to six companies. We heard back from three. And our, for lack of better words, our lowest price this year was fifty-five dollars a ton. New as of last year to some companies, there is a diesel surcharge happening that fluctuates with the average price of diesel. So that's kind of new to us, but it is our second year dealing with that. So that'll fluctuate the price on any given load, depending where we are. And just to give you a quick average of how that estimates is if we went with our lowest price at fifty-five dollars a ton and with the diesel surcharge, if the diesel, the average was six dollars a gallon, we would be paying fifty-seven dollars per ton. That price is up. The way we look at price within the chips is every dollar is about a thousand dollars in the world. So that's high because we haven't used a thousand tons for quite some time, but that's the easy number to work with. It's a dollar is a thousand. So with that, I would recommend using Quizzle No Force products. They're out of Henneker. We've had them multiple times within my time in my position. They've delivered a high-quality product on time, never let us get empty, and they are the lowest price this year.
Thanks. Yep.
I have a question on this. I'm happy to support the recommendation, make the motion to approve it, but I'm just wondering if the board needs to make that motion? I'm thinking about our board meeting in terms of, you know, like management versus oversight. And I feel like this feels very day-to-day managey. And so I just would like clarification on whether, you know, this is like a, needs a board motion.
The reason it's on here is because it meets your purchasing policy requirements for the amount of money that it ends up costing each year. And we are going to bring that to your attention at some point, that purchasing policy and increasing that threshold. But for right now, it falls under that policy, so it needs board approval.
I'll make a motion to approve Josh's recommendation.
Your second? Any questions? I appreciate the legwork that went into it. Thank you. If there's no comments, questions, all in favor of approving the contract with, can I try to say it? You say it again? Quiz No Force products for, to be our contracted wood chip vendor for next year. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Nothing for gifts and donations, right? Okay, so we'll move on to number eight. So eight A, our first meet of the meeting, as I like to call it, is a presentation from Amy Parkinson, our curriculum director at PA, and Chris Motica, our curriculum director at the SAU level, about thoughtful classroom.
No, it's not.
Now it's on. All right. So thank you guys for having us this evening. We're really excited to be here because it feels as though tonight is a culmination of, of really about a year's worth of work that Amy and I have done, that our entire SAU administrative staff has done. So it's really nice to be here. In particular, when we, when we look at this first slide, it was all about linking our past with our present. So if you look at the screen, what you'll see is something that educators are very used to, which is building an airplane while we are flying in it. With all of the different kind of education jargon that we have, you'll notice a lot of things up there that we've done in the past, oh, I don't know, three to five years, right? And so like, there's always this sense of, of kind of, we're all over the place and there's so much going on. And so what we've realized, Amy, if you want to hit the next slide, is, is that something was missing. There was kind of a glue that was missing. And really what we found is that the thoughtful classroom is that glue. Go ahead. So what the thoughtful classroom is, it's a framework for teaching and learning. So it's, it basically takes all of those best practices that you saw on the last or two slides ago and brings them all together in a really meaningful way with a vision towards better teaching, better learning. So the entire SAU has been following with this framework in some way, shape, or form throughout the year. We, basically, we've, we've taken that foundation that we talked about in best practice, so SEL, competency-based learning, project-based learning, all those things and roll it into one. What we've done this year, particularly at PA, is we have taken, we basically looked for models and artifacts for teachers to create those things. So Amy and I have gone into, we've worked here in the building and we've presented on some of the cornerstones, which Amy's going to talk about in just a second. And we've basically, we've given teachers a little bit of instruction. Teachers have gone off and built an artifact, created an artifact, implemented with students, come back, they share the results with their peers, with us as a, as a whole group. It's been really, really powerful to see not only the things that teachers have come up with, but the ways that that's impacted students. The same has happened at Three Rivers, primarily with me leading the way, just because Amy's here all the time. And we've, we've done a lot of that introductory work at Hill School as well. So we're in a really good place and, so Amy, take it away.
All right, so yeah, so being here, wrapping up year eighteen, woo-hoo. But it's one of those things, we have done like a lot of things over the years. So when we came to Thoughtful Classroom, what was, one of the nicer things was that it really didn't say, everything you learned right now, you can kind of forget about it because we're on to something new. It was more about, okay, so how did all that work together? And so one of the first things I did, once I got this framework, and I'll go through a little bit of it, was I emptied out the framework. I took all the words out except for the titles and I just wrote down all the different things we had done over the years. I was like, oh, well, this goes here and this goes here and this goes here. And it's nice to connect everything back together. So this year, what we did with our faculty meetings here at PA is we said, we started it last year and we kind of continued it on, this should have been an email. So every faculty meeting, we have a newsletter that goes out. It's all the, it should have been an email kind of stuff. So we have all that stuff for later dates, all those links, everything you need. But then we really spend the chunk of our time working together on professional development. So each month, for about a month or two, we've taken a different, one of the cornerstones and we've talked about them as a group. Chris and I have presented on them. And then the teachers take them, make tools and go back and like try them out in the classroom and bring them back and we share. So we started out talking about positive relationships. It's a good place to start, really engaging people and getting students back from COVID and like to a more full-time. It's a good place to start, really engaging people and getting students back from COVID and like to a more full-time position. We then moved on to that engagement and enjoyment. We're engaging our kids, enjoying classes. What are we doing to actually encourage that? That's part of where the new summer reading program came out of, and that idea of increasing choice. So we went from a community read and like one other book to we have 64 books that all students can choose from. Right? So we have a whole new model because of that particular cornerstone. A culture of thinking and learning is how we continued on with that. So like, okay, we all like to read, so what do we do with it? That's what we did with summer reading, but also getting out into each other's classrooms, talking to each other, really seeing what's going on. And we are going to start off the new year with our three days of professional development. One of those main areas that we're going to present again are those organization rules and procedures. Those are just really fun ones at the beginning. I think it works well. If you notice, it's all set up, nice little tile. You have your cornerstones. The green part in the middle, those are your dimensions. That's like the good teaching part, like day-to-day, what kind of things are you doing? How are you expressing? How are you engaging students? And then the bottom one, the foundation of all of it is that professional practice. Being like a teacher, how do you do that? How do you work with your colleagues, your students, your parents, your community? Where does that come from?
I think it's important to note here too, that one of the things that Amy and I really felt strongly about as we brought this to teachers throughout the district is we wanted to model practice. We expected them to be using these tools and, and practices. So we decided that we really needed to model them. And so across all the schools, we basically put teachers through exercises and use the tools that focused in on how do you organize a classroom? So for example, our classroom is either the PA faculty or my groups at Three Rivers by teams or full faculty at Hill School. And we would have them actually incorporate or use, we would use the tools with them so that they could experience them as a learner would. And I think that's one of the things that had gone over best across the schools.
Agreed. So just again, another slide on like the four cornerstones and some of the things we talked about. Those ideas that we really are, when we come back and be looking again at like rules and roles and routines and expectations and how do we keep things flowing and going? And it'll be nice to have ones that's not just, hey, we're coming back from COVID, don't stand too close to each other. Like how do we set up our classrooms to really reengage and continue on the movement that they've done and they've done really good things? Because when you go into the classrooms, at least for my walkarounds with Dan each morning, you can see these things happening in the classroom more and more and these little tools are popping up. And you're seeing similar things and hearing people talk about them as we go along.
And cornerstone one, it's about facilitation. It's about how is it, how do you use protocols to your advantage? How do you use, you know, movement and things like that? So it's all about that facilitation, keeping things moving, keeping the learning going, keeping learning at a high level. Want to go? I can go? All right. So as far as some highlights, the tools are really cool. We have two books. I think, I don't know, I think not every teacher has them, but I know that there are plenty on order. And there are plenty that we've utilized and we make copies for folks as needed. But basically the tools, we have two books full of tools. One is all about assessment practices. The other is all about pedagogical practices. And so these tools are really practical. They take things sometimes teachers have used in the past or know about and haven't tried. And they make it really easy for a teacher to implement. There's lots of examples about how would you use this tool in a science context in a middle school? Or how would you use this in a social studies context in a high school? Or an elementary classroom, fourth grade math, for example. So they're really practical. They're easy to use, easy to revise. And the cool thing is that a lot of the cornerstones mix together. So for example, Amy and I used a tool with the various faculties that asked them, it was a, it was basically a self-assessment tool. So how did you do in your own work? And, and that not only is a, is an organization rules and procedures, but it's also an engagement and enjoyment tool. Because it really measures, as well as culture of thinking and learning, it measures, how much did you put in? What is it that you, could you have done a little bit more as a student or as a colleague? Could you have done more to make this product even better? So it crosses, a lot of the tools cross the cornerstones, which I think is really, really awesome for teachers.
So I just threw up some pictures of our, some of the things we've been doing around the school. Some of them are older projects. The Mole Project, for example, down here, we've been doing that for a while.
And I still think that's you in the upper left-hand corner.
I know, right? Writing on a table, my goodness. But so recent work at a glance, so Hill School, you've been working on some of the introductions for three of the four cornerstones?
Yeah, so we actually got to two. We got, we got canceled in one of our meetings and that didn't change. I changed it on my slide, but that must not be live. So we've actually gone over two of the four cornerstones at Hill School. And, and so teachers really engaged, I thought, really well, especially our last session, which, which we had them, again, utilizing those tools as students. And so that was really great. At TRS, each of the grade levels has gone through two of the four cornerstones as well. So I work in grade level teams there and we've really, I can't tell you the, the power of the conversations that the teachers had. First and foremost, when I went in and did some introductory work and gave them a task to, hey, find a tool that you find interesting. John actually, or sorry, Mr. Marston, followed it up on one of the PD days and had them finding another tool. So basically what happened was all the teachers had like two different tools they were working on. And we had a chance in my next session with them to debrief what it meant for students. And the discussions that teachers had about students, let's say, one, putting in a little bit more effort. Two, their own ability to ask students to go deeper and to really, to, to, to ask kind of why for everything in that culture of thinking and learning. Those were really powerful conversations and I give the teachers at Three Rivers so much kudos for all of their work. PA?
Yeah, so at PA, we're, we have introduced all the four cornerstones. We've really worked on three of them. Because we're going to start the fourth, really pushing on it at the, once we come back. But one of the things, for example, is the Rocket Project. So in the fall semester, they've been doing the Rocket Project forever, but they're like, what can we do to make it better? So they actually got up as a team, they looked through the tools, they grabbed a couple of things, but then they also grabbed someone who knew how to use the Makerspace stuff. And they all worked together on that, on building their own parts and writing up all the different things on how to make your own parts for the Rocket Project, using the Makerspace, which then went on to the mousetrap cars and et cetera. So they're just kind of spinning and it's going from project to project, whether they started with it or not. So it's been kind of great to see all of that work and it's so nice to go in there during a faculty meeting and instead of having a bunch of people sitting there, like listening to people and being polite, they're sitting there at tables and talking to each other and they're discussing what they're doing in the classrooms. And then when the kids are going into the classrooms, those teachers know what they're doing in all the other classrooms because they were talking about it with their colleagues. And it's been, it's been nice. It's been a nice little shift in that meeting and making them really productive.
The sharing of artifacts has been really powerful across the board. So next steps. So into next year, our goal is really to continue sharing the rest of the cornerstones with staff. Making sure that they feel comfortable with them, that they understand what these tools are. And we want to continue a slow implementation of those tools. And again, it's, we've really focused on this as a PD model. We're really bringing this to them and saying, hey, these are really good strategies to help engage your kids, to help get your kids to deeper levels of learning. And that really responds to a lot of the concerns we hear at times. So we want to increase knowledge of the dimensions and how that connects the cornerstones and the tools. We really haven't gotten into that too much. And really just continue to, to build capacity at the teacher and administrative level.
I'll, I'll add to that. We are going to be working with some teachers this summer with a person who was pretty much the guru of all of it. And when I went to talk to a couple of teachers about whether they want to come in in August to do two days of training, they were like, yes, I do. And I was really excited because, bless you, because we have that excitement and that move forward. And I know that they're going to pull that and really help with the dimensions and department meetings and all of that next year.
And I have an exercise for you guys in the fall as well. So we will run through that. So much like we've done with the faculty, we want you guys to experience the thoughtful classroom and the tools. So we will have something for you then. Sound good? Any questions for us? Sorry, we geek out on this stuff.
Thanks very much. We're glad that you geek out on this stuff because it's important. And yeah, it'll be great to hear back in the fall. Maybe if those teachers that work with you in the summer are willing to come and chat with us and so we can hear from their end what this has been like too, that would be great.
Sounds good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I said it a couple of times, but I'll say it again. It's nice to be spending our meetings talking about the students and education again.
I have a question. Looking forward, do you have other long-term plans of what you'll be doing with this?
No, I, I think we really want teachers, and this just goes for good models of leadership in school. We want people speaking the same language.
Yep.
We want people to understand that this is our vision for good teaching and learning. We want everybody bought into that. And, you know, so far it's gone well, not just here in Pembroke, but in many of our other districts. Some are a little further along, some are a little further behind, but we've really worked hard as an SAU leadership team. And that includes the principals, specialized directors, assistant principals, district leadership, or SAU leadership, to get everybody on board and on the same page. I think everybody's really appreciative of that.
Excellent.
Future work too, just to make everyone aware, we've continued to use our SR funds on, which is why we get the person that authored the book to come in and train with us. So he'll be back this summer. And then we've also just finished up a contract with him to have him come and do a keynote for our staff in October. So he'll do a keynote for everyone for two hours. And then he's going to spend 20 minutes or so in all eight of our schools, just to see the schools, meet people, see the building. And then he'll be back for four consecutive days and he'll do learning walks in our schools, one-to-one with staff and administration. So that's kind of mapped out next year and we're going to get the book in every teacher's hands, so.
Cool. Any others? Okay. And they'll move on to 8B, which is an update on the RFP process for Hill School.
So we did have six firms come in and do the walkthrough with Josh. Thank you for all that time that you spent. All six of them turned in a proposal, which is pretty unusual and that was great. A small group of us, I presented you that proposal for how this process would work and you approved it. So Amber, Josh and I reviewed the six of them and narrowed it down to three firms. And those interviews will be conducted with the larger committee, the 14th and the 16th. So those three firms will come in and then the finalists will come before the full board, your full board, for an interview and you'll choose who you would like to move forward to do the work for us.
Any questions on that? Glad it's moving forward and looking forward to hearing some more details. At, I don't know if it's too early at this point, but during this process, has, have we been given like a timeframe? Let's say this, you know, the bond does pass in March. What's the timeframe from that point? Do, I mean, do they run right in or, you know?
We're not there. It's pretty early on. And it really depends on what the board decides to use for a process. I don't, I don't like to be negative, but if you want to engage in the full process to do this, chances are that you're not going to have a warrant article ready in January. It would be a pretty big rush. And you would skip steps in the process, which I'm not sure we want to do. So we may not be ready this year.
I think that's a, that's a bigger conversation that's coming. I've, I've spoken with Amber a little bit and looking at the, a little bit deeper at the processes that both Allentown and Deerfield did and what the pluses and minuses were for those and, you know, one was successful. We're definitely going to have some decisions to make on that timeline and how this is all going to look. But I think once we get this part nailed down, we'll have a better idea what all that looks like. Anything else on that? It's a quick one. Okay, so that kind of plays into, to 8C. As we're talking about the Hill School expansion, the Pembroke Energy Committee reached out and wanted to be involved in those discussions as much as is reasonable to offer suggestions and things that they might be able to do on energy efficiency and, and things like that. So we have a, I'm not sure who's going to speak, but whoever wants to jump right up and, and.
My name is Matt Miller with Pembroke Energy Committee. I've got Jackie Wingenroth.
Yeah, you gotta really swallow that.
We've got Jackie Wingenroth here with me and Pinty Alto as well. So we've got a three-fifths of the committee. I actually have four topics. They're all related. They're pretty short and I'll just kind of go through them. We were here, Richard and I were here a few months ago and we, we gave you a little update on what we were doing with this thing called Community Power. So I do, I just want to let you know a little bit about that, the advances we've made on that. So Community Power is, it's a, an offering that we'll put together that will be like Pembroke has another electric supply option. Consumers, businesses, municipalities, et cetera. So we have drafted a Community Power Plan. That, the draft is essentially complete. That document will go through a couple of public hearings. It'll be turned into a warrant article. It'd be voted on in a town meeting. So I'm more about that in a moment. The Pembroke Energy Committee is in the process of preparing right now for those couple of public hearings that will be in the fall. And the main goal we have there is how to increase community awareness of it and, and, you know, get people to not be startled by it or, you know, to answer all their questions. The organization that will support the provision of electric power is something called the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. They've done two main things to help be prepared to be a competitive energy supplier. One of them is that they've solicited or they've distributed a request for proposal for comprehensive services and credit support to become basically a power supplier. So that is a major milestone and we should have the proposals back from that in, in the summer. And then secondly, they have submitted draft administrative rules for this RSA 53E, which is the laws that basically govern community power, electric aggregation municipalities. CPCNH submitted the draft administrative rules. Those were accepted and, you know, there will be some debate and process. But that should likely be approved later this summer. So, so that is the first topic, just kind of an update on Community Power Coalition, Community Power Plan for Pembroke. The second topic is actually an internship opportunity that we have. So as I said, we're trying to increase the community awareness of the Community Power Plan. And the, the plan has the potential to reduce rates for people. It has the potential to increase access to renewable power and as well enable power initiatives or energy projects that are of interest to Pembroke, the community. But we're not good at getting the word out, apparently. We've held several community workshops. We haven't had really big attendance. So we're, we're wondering if there's a way to advertise to the, any interested Pembroke Academy student, an opportunity to work with us to try to create some kind of social media outreach in, to help us run up to having successful public meetings in the fall and then ultimately a vote. So the skills that we're looking for are people who know how to use Facebook and LinkedIn and YouTube, Instagram, whatever, whatever social media platform. And would have a willingness to work with people on the Energy Committee, ourselves and others, to basically come up with a plan and figure out how to, you know, broadcast that and then assess whatever feedback is happening. So we think the opportunity is you can have, students could have a positive impact on the community. We're led to believe it could be counted towards some kind of community service credits, which might be needed. They could also learn a lot of really interesting practical things about energy markets, energy generation, energy transition, and have interactions with people that are interested in that for Pembroke, up to including a select board of people. So we're the contacts. I have several little sheets like this. If I can give it to someone who could maybe help us get it towards students, that would be great. Then, so that was the second topic. The, the third topic is Pembroke Academy Energy Evaluation, Energy Efficiency Evaluation. I actually heard that you just had, you had an RFP for woodchips for your, your furnace and things like that. There's, there's a publication and some information out kind of about average schools in, in the country. And the average school spends around 2% to 4% of its budget on energy, on lights, on heating, thermal power, stuff like that. And the electricity use, you know, basically, if I focus on electricity use for a second, it really has two types of charges. There's consumption charges, which are what you pay when you turn the light on per kilowatt hour. And then there are demand charges, which is to say there's a boost to your fee based on your peak consumption. And so energy programs that help schools reduce their energy consumption, save money on their budget, focus on both those things. How do you reduce consumption a little bit? How do you conserve? And then second, how can you moderate your peak demand? And the study that was done shows that schools can achieve energy savings of up to about 25%, depending on the situation and so forth. And so, and by the way, the types of savings they get are, you know, turning off things, turning down things, cleaning and maintaining systems properly, where appropriate upgrading to more efficient things like swapping fluorescent lights for LEDs or whatever. And there's more, you know, there's local programs that utilities may run to help gain additional savings. So we're very curious to know what are the Pembroke Academy's energy characteristics? We have people in the committee that have expertise in doing that kind of thing, such as Jackie and Pinty. And so we would like to know, is there a focal point that we could, you know, interact with somebody to kind of get involved or maybe help do some type of energy audit and start to find out what are the energy characteristics? Are there ways to help you save money on energy? And then the fourth, the fourth and last topic, which is related to this as well, is as you get into your planning process for your school expansion, the question is, how do you build in energy efficiency? How do you make sure that the facility is cost-effective and operating cost-effective as well? And just the same people in our Energy Committee have a lot of experience in understanding, you know, what are kind of state-of-the-art techniques? What are good practices for design of schools to make, you know, to make use of the environment, the orientation, to make use of the best materials and so forth, best cost-effective materials? So similarly, we're interested in a focal point or a way to get involved and kind of give some input on giving good ideas and maybe helping assess options you have to make a really efficient school, again, ultimately to be cost-effective for yourselves and the students. But that was my four topics. So any questions on any of those?
Anybody?
I have questions. I mean, I am in line with a lot of the things that you have been sharing. My understanding is that there was the Honeywell project that affected or benefited all of the three schools, right? I don't know what the sort of set of documentation that went with that is, but that sounds like whatever documentation there is would be helpful for these guys to get their hands on as a starting place. There's always room for improvement, and, you know, I think we should strive for continuous improvement, so. But it sounds like that would be a good starting point for these guys. And then I can't, I can't recall what the status, is there any longer a Pembroke-Hill School Expansion Committee, you know, that they could sit on? I assume you're going to speak to that.
Yeah, there is. And so I can, I think I already promised this to you, haven't done it yet, but I can send an email to Kevin Foss, who chairs that committee, so that you guys can jump on there. And it's not 100% clear what their role is going to be going forward. But as we said a few minutes ago, that process is going to shake itself out fairly soon once the board decides kind of how this is all going to play out long-term. So we'd, you know, definitely like to involve you on that piece. It's a citizens committee anyway, so anybody that wants to can jump on there. And, yeah, and so Dr. Morse can give you information about, as far as interns and community service hours and things like that. You know, I think Mr. Coughlin will be open to sharing the information about the Honeywell project and some of our energy needs, you know, as long as we're not monopolizing his time. He's a busy guy. But, yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's an appetite for, you know, a partnership here for you guys to have some awareness on it, you know, as is feasible. I think that those interviews are coming up next week, two weeks, whatever it is. And after that, we're going to be down to just two things. I would say for that piece, I'm going to be in the room on all of those. So if you guys have any, like, very specific questions, if you want to forward those to me, if the opportunity presents, I'm happy to ask those questions and get answers for you guys. And then, yeah, once we kind of work out the process. I've never been through this before either, so those meetings next week may not even be the right time to ask. But, you know, certainly if there's some big-ticket, you know, type topics that you want me to hit, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Just Amber, our business administrator, has been sharing, we're going to need a scoring rubric when we do the interviews, and that is a component, are the energy efficiencies that are presented. Amy had brought that up too, to kind of make sure as we're going through. And I think that is an expectation that all of the firms are aware that that's what we're going to be looking for. And I know going through this process already once, that the firms are pretty open, and we can bring that forward. If there's something, when you look at the proposal, you say, hey, we should really be thinking about X. Please let us know what the cost of that would be. And they're pretty open to ideas and suggestions. So any specifics, like Andy said, if you want to get those to us right away. But that is one of the criteria on the scoring rubric.
Okay, yeah, great, yeah, we'll do that for sure.
And after, so after the board decides on a firm, then the RFP would become public information, right? Who wanted to, the proposal, yes, sorry. So, you know, at that point, that could be shared, and if you want to look through that, and if there's things that jump out at you that they're not paying enough attention to, or things, you know, whatever, you can certainly share that information too, so.
Is your RFP document itself, I would expect that to be a public document as well. And is that, you have that written already, or is it drafted, or?
So the RFP already went out, and then we had six firms respond to that. So that was posted publicly, and six firms did walkthroughs and turned in proposals. We narrowed it down to three, and then those are the interviews we'll be conducting.
It might be useful for us to just take a look at that. So where do you post that document?
It's on our website, and then our business administrator has another construction-type site that she uses. I don't remember what the name of it is, but...
Is that an SAU site?
Yep, sau53.org, yes. And if you can't find it, if you want to just email me, I'll get it into your hands.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Mr. Miller is also the most recently appointed member of our Budget Committee in town, so we'll be working with him in the spring too. All right, let me get back to my agenda here. So we're moving on to 8D. So we've got Budget Update, and a couple of additional items attached to that.
Do you want me to start? Your most recent end-of-year update indicates around projected $880,000 surplus at this point. We do need to keep in mind that you had around 400, I think it was 453,000 in warrant articles that will come off of that, so that those get funded. And then the next piece of business to take care of, I had put in your drive the resurrected cut sheet from the fall. Some of you may remember that we cut $327,000 out of the budget. We had prepared in the fall, October, November timeframe, a document with the areas that we could propose these cuts in, as well as a column for how we might either fund them or maybe just delete them from the budget completely. So there were some items that we planned to use the Essar grant funds, and we are continuing to do that. There were also some areas that we said, you know what, let's cut this. And then when we get to the end of the year, if we have enough in surplus, we can purchase them now instead of waiting until July 1st into the next fiscal year. So those cuts are identified. We added a new column. Our administrators carried forward the items that were proposed to be purchased from surplus. A couple of things were deleted that they don't feel that they need at this point. But each total is on there, the grand total for all of those cuts from surplus was $102,069, I think, if I'm reading it correctly. So do you want me to do all of them at once, or take one at a time?
What do you mean? Each line? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can tell, let's do dishwasher right now too, and then we can kind of have a discussion. And then you need action on this one.
Yes.
And, okay.
So that is the surplus sheet from the budget cuts. The next sheet was added late this afternoon, and I brought a copy because of that. So Denise, our new food service director, had an issue with the dishwasher. Come to find out, this Hobart dishwasher is over 60 years old. It had made the move to Pembroke from one kitchen to another. There were some issues with things that were held together with zip ties and concerns from the inspector that this may not continue to pass. And the bigger concern is that it's not made anymore, and now there is no parts to be found. So if something breaks on our 60-year-old dishwasher, we will have a sanitation issue on our hands. So Amber worked with Denise to get some quotes for the dishwasher. They were pretty varied. I think they did only get two, so they're trying to get one more so that they can meet the requirement to get three quotes. But they are requesting $35,000 to purchase this new dishwasher with the hopes that it will cost less. But I think that is the max cost that they feel they would incur to replace this. So we are making that recommendation because it is time-sensitive, and we're hitting into the summer, that this would be the perfect time to replace that.
Okay, so that one seems easier. So is there, does anybody want to talk about the, or ask questions about the dishwasher first?
I'm inclined to have a motion structured that would not just straight-out authorize $35,000, but would authorize no more than $35,000 after they get at least three quotes. And I would include in there, I think I would like to include in there, delegating Patty to review and decide upon, you know, the final purchase decision, just so that we can be done with it tonight, put in the appropriate controls, which I think what I've just mentioned are appropriate controls, but recognize that they still need a little bit of, to do a little bit of work.
The, my one concern, I love your motion, I'm concerned about us getting a third quote because she's been waiting and hounding, and we're just having a really hard time with purchasing and vendors in general. So doing our due diligence, there may come a point, and whether that's a week from now, to say, okay, we're not getting a return response from three, so we may have to choose from two.
Could we say that we could revisit that? And we do have one more meeting this year, it wasn't too long to push this out.
I think I'm comfortable wording it, you know, after completing all, after making all appropriate diligent efforts towards obtaining three quotes.
I'm okay with that. Other questions or thoughts? Was that a motion, or are you just saying you were thinking?
Yeah, no, I was floating it, just to make sure if you guys all jumped up and down and said, like, no way, then I would try to come up with something else. But, yeah, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve the expenditure of no more than $35,000 to purchase a new dishwasher contingent on making, on completing, not on making, on completing all appropriate diligent efforts in an effort to obtain three quotes and delegating to the superintendent the final decision-making on which dishwasher to purchase.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Question, who are, do you know who the vendors are that have responded?
Do you want me to let you know?
Yeah, because there's, there's one in Boe, Kittredge. So I just, I know they're a commercial kitchen supply. I don't know if that's one of the ones that you've reached out to.
If she has, I know.
Yeah.
There were one.
Any other questions? I, I'm wondering if this is an appropriate use of one of our various trust funds when it comes time to actually make the purchase and pay for it.
If you don't want to use surplus, you can certainly use the equipment trust fund. That's, you know, Josh has that pretty earmarked for lots of different things. There's not, there's well under $200,000 in it, I believe, and this would be 35 of that.
Is that something we have to establish now? Which way we're going to pay for it?
Only because if you're going to use surplus, that we have passed Amber's deadline, and she'll squeeze us in to get this purchase made. But if you waited, then you would miss the end-of-year purchase timeline.
Can I pull up trust funds, the trust fund balance sheet in a reasonable amount of time?
I had assumed that this would be funded from surplus. The trust fund being more of a capital expenditure funding mechanism, capital expenditure implying planned capital expenditures, not emergency expenditures, which is what I'm seeing this falling into. But I don't carry strongly the other way.
Well, that's fair enough. Any other questions, comments on the dishwasher? Oh, it's Coughlin? Okay, which is... Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I mean, I'm happy not specifying, and I think surplus is fine. It's sort of what it's here for, in a way. And town has interest in us keeping that number to a more reasonable level anyhow. So anything else? Sandy, do you mind reading it back?
Sorry, go ahead, you. You know, if we did take it out of the trust, we'd end up having to replace it anyway, so it's a wash, basically.
Good point. Okay, ready to move? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, that's done. And so now we go back to the discussion of the quote-unquote "cut sheet" that we made last year when trying to get the budget number back under control. As Patty pointed out, not everything that was decreased there is now asking to be funded here. I looked over this fairly closely and don't really have any qualms about any of it. It all makes sense to me. There's some things that I wouldn't mind throwing back in, but I'm not going to push my luck. Does anybody have questions or comments about this list?
I feel exactly the same way. I feel like there's some things that could be, some additional things that could be added in if there's still, you know, $200,000 of stuff that was cut that's still not put back in. But I agree exactly with what Andy said, and I'm totally in support of this.
Conversations as an administrative team, we did identify if you, if there was an appetite for one other priority, it would not be something on this cut sheet. If you want to hear more about it, we would be happy to do that after you take action on this.
Right. Any more discussion about the sheet? So just to throw perspective on it, right now, the surplus estimate sits at roughly 880K. When you remove what will go into warrant articles, that takes us down to 430. We just authorized dishwasher for up to 35, so that takes us down to 395. So this, if we authorize the spending on all of these, that would take us down to about $293,000 surplus. Are there still, I know usually...
that broke. I can't remember what it was.
Oh.
Yes.
Yeah.
Nice.
And that's why they took your secretary. Yeah. Yeah, so no, we're not expecting other, any other adjustments on the, you know, 10, 20, $30,000 type.
Not, not that Amber is aware of, and she's, our schools have worked really, really hard to have all their POs finished up and closed so that she had a good handle on it. So unless something crazy happens, I think we're in good shape.
Okay. Any other questions before we, or does anybody want to make a motion?
I'm moved to approve the 102-plus reinstatement of these items funded from surplus.
Wait, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Then all in favor of approving?
Wait a second.
Yep.
Sorry. Question.
Yeah.
Because I've been, I looked at this too long. So just, some of these say that we're going to take it from Ezra, but they, it's not subtracted off the bottom. Oh, I see.
So they're not carried over.
Never mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was from the original sheet.
Question wasn't coming up. I'm like, wait a second, we didn't subtract from the total.
Yeah. No, there's a new column.
Ignore me.
Okay. Then all in favor of approving 100, the expenditure of 102,069 to fund the items listed on the cut sheet, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. Now, so we're roughly sitting just a little under $300,000 surplus at the moment. No other expectations. Do we want to hear what Patty and the administration have talked about for additional spending?
Yes, please.
Can I hand it over to Dr. Morris, who is, could speak to this a little bit better than I can, but we have an issue with a common space that we share quite often with the town, and I'll let you explain what's happening.
Thank you. We have two needs in our auditorium. We've put them off. We haven't put them in the budget because they are big-ticket items. The first is a replacement of our main curtain. That is a lot of square footage, a very heavy fabric. There are fire retardant codes that need to go into that as well. That also requires additional hardware. That hardware is currently broken and there are some zip ties that are being used. So we've kind of cobbled it together. The quote for that, it was $50,000. You know, you have to have a professional organization come in to do that for the installation. The second update that we need to at least start considering for that space is a replacement of our projector and that kind of issue. That projector and that cart have been in place for approximately 10 years now. Given the length of throw that the projector needs to be able to do, it's not, if that projector were to go down, we can't just pull a projector, certainly not one off of the wall in a classroom, it wouldn't work. And then the smaller ones that we have here as replacements in classrooms can't do it long-term. So we either need to look at replacing, in the short term, replacing the projector on the cart. What I would like to suggest is permanently installing a projector on the ceiling. It's out of prying hands and, and, you know, there is some cost involved in that, and primarily that is cordage, as you can imagine, is very expensive. And when you put something stationary in a ceiling, it needs to go somewhere. So it becomes a little harder. That is $20,000.
I have a question. I thought, and perhaps had a glimmer of hope for a moment, what you were going to say when it was a common, you know, shared space, town, school needs, was, I can't remember what meeting it was recently, that there was just so many complaints about the acoustics of the sound system. A lot of folks that were saying that they were hard of hearing, just like, could not hear. Is there any?
I think that that was from the first of the two meetings this year, which took place in the gym. And we did it in the gym because there was still a little bit of COVID concern. And then after that, in response, we did go to the auditorium for the next meeting. I don't, I could be wrong, I don't think I remember hearing those for the auditorium.
You're right. Thank you.
And that was bad.
Going on that, which I had the same thought, are there auditory panels in the Audi?
No, on the sides there aren't. Now, the ceiling is a suspended ceiling and there are acoustic qualities to that that help dampen reflection. Actually, the angle of those walls also help with that, but we don't have acoustic-specific handling on the sidewalls. You know, to be perfectly honest, if we were, those are very expensive, and if we were to put those in, I would be concerned about vandalism of those. They're generally pretty delicate. So, you know, you'd have to do it in a way where it'd be hard for students to reach those. And then at that point, it mitigates the impact of them anyway.
Okay.
You're welcome.
This is only partly related and probably doesn't have anything to do with the cost, but I'll say it anyway. After the meeting that Amy was referencing, it, I did have a couple of comments, in fact, Stacy, you might have been one of them, that maybe we could look into like live closed captioning software. So because we do have public meetings in there, it'd be great to be able to have, you know, if we're projecting anyway, it'd be great to be able to have, for hard-of-hearing folks, to have that up there. I'm not sure if that would be to the cost of something that we would have to, you know, talk about now, but something to consider going forward.
And is, is that kind of software portable? You know, is that something that could be used like in the auditorium, in the gym, in the whatever space, you know, the school district was using?
Yeah, I think Stacy's got some expertise, but as far as I know, it would be based on the computer that you're using. So yeah, it should be able to be used.
It is, and it's not that bad. And then you have it and you can use it.
It's, the cost is not going to be an amount that we would need to approve.
Right. Exactly.
Excellent. Okay. So discussion around the curtains, the projector, or both?
Decide to go forward with either of these items, they do, you would need to waive your purchasing policy because it would require multiple quotes and the quote to come before you and be approved. So if you're going to approve that tonight, you would either need to waive the policy or I don't even think we could make it. We couldn't wait until June 21st. So just to be aware of that.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Patty, are you saying that the requisite number of quotes couldn't even be obtained before June 21st?
Yes. And waiting to get the quotes, get the bids in, and then get it to you for approval and get it in the system, everything closes June 30th. Yeah.
I hate to ask the question, but I will. Dr. Morris, if you had to prioritize these, which one would you say is more urgent, I guess?
So before I answer that, I just want to correct. I wanted to confirm because I forgot the piece of paper in my office, probably because of the air conditioning. But the projector, the projector number, to be accurate, is 27,669. So that is an increase. Between those two, the curtain is a more significant cost. It's been a longer-term problem, and it's more impactful if we were to try to put that in a budget later. And, you know, our projector, at this point, we have been managing with it and we can still do that. If we wanted to look at a less expensive solution where we're just, you know, replacing that projector and keeping it on the cart, we can do that. So my recommendation would be the curtain.
My thought is if we can get along with the projector for one more year, that maybe next year we, I know Josh knows the process better than I do, but if we had a warrant article to put funds into the, I think it would be the technology trust specifically for this, you know, more visibility for the public and whatnot. Other thoughts?
Have you gotten quotes on the curtain?
Yeah, that was $50,000 for that.
I'm just wondering whether you have specific quotes that we could put a total amount of money on that and it would be accurate.
If you give me a moment, I can go. I don't have that in my email, but I can go get that. And I make copies and bring them to you if you'd like.
Okay. Because I would like to make a motion, but I'd like an amount that's accurate.
One sec.
that same meeting where people were complaining about the sound, one of the comments that really struck me was, and this was a perspective that I'm not sure I agree with, but the speaker was very passionate, and it's a sentiment that I've heard repeatedly since I've been serving on the board from many different people, which is, we need to figure out the answer as to why people hold Pembroke Academy in lesser esteem than they used to, generally speaking. You know, why isn't it as sought after as it once was? Not that it's much less sought after, but that generally it's just not the, you know, best and brightest that it ever, ever was. And I do think that that is related in small part to stuff like a ratty, broken curtain. And, you know, when you get dressed for the day, you know, you don't pick out your raddiest clothes mostly, you know, you pick out, you know, the stuff you feel like is going to make you look good. And I think that the students and the teachers feel that when you have a major piece of performance, sort of theatrical stage that's ratty and broken. I think that reflects in a negative way. And I think that I am definitely behind investing in the infrastructure of the school so that it instills pride in the people that are here on a day-to-day basis.
Do we want to, I feel like Dr. Morris, it's not going to be that long. I mean, we can, we can continue. Yeah. So.
Do you want me to try to make a motion for that with the amount to be put in it?
No, it's okay. I don't think it's going to be that long. So, I mean, we do, we do have a 6/21 meeting. Do we have, what else do we have left that we need to accomplish?
I think we can, I think we can jump to goal-setting and then just come back to this.
Okay. How long do you think they're going to present? They're going to be pretty long-winded.
Architect interviews next week, I think we're planning on around 30 minutes hearing from them and then allowing up to 30 minutes for follow-up and clarifying questions. If that's what you'd like to do, if you think we can cut that shorter because we'll have already gone through that round, we'll let the firms know.
What do you guys think? So we're going to have two people come in on the 21st to present the proposals for the Hill School. Reasonable amount of time for them to present and for us to ask questions? We can get through each one in 45 minutes?
I feel like, from my perspective, I feel like I need, you know, three to five minutes from the firm, then maybe almost three, five minutes, or maybe even a little bit longer about why guys decided they should be here. That's almost more important to me.
So I'm just trying to think, I would love to just say we could fit both of these, both goal-setting stuff and those in on the 21st, but I'm not sure that's realistic.
It may not be realistic, but I mean, I think you can put it in there and at least get part, we'd be at least able to get through it, part of that goal-setting and.
Okay. So then, do we, do we want to risk the busyness of all of our calendars and wait until the end of that 6/21 meeting to schedule another session to finish our goals, or do we want to try to nail that down tonight?
Can I ask a question about potentially streamlining the goal-setting conversation? But the question, you know, result, or revolves around the limitations of our use of email. You know, can we saddle Andy, and if we don't want to saddle Andy as the chair, I'd be happy to volunteer, with, you know, each individual board member writing down their thoughts about what the goals for the board should be for next year? And then Andy, if you want to as chair, or if you don't, I'm happy to volunteer and just cope. And then this is going in and out, but like, hey, in June, that was almost exactly the same thing when we put that together. And just sort of add it all together and then present that as the starting point of the conversation to help expedite the work.
Is it right, understand what she's saying and?
Yeah.
I think so too. I think I get what she's saying, and I think you can probably do the goal-setting in the next meeting because if we all have an idea of like our most important things, the biggest part of your goal-setting, most of the board has already agreed, is we really want a strategic plan, and that's going to be like your first thing is like in the fall, we need to figure out who's going to be facilitating our whole entire strategic plan. That's a six-to-nine-month process. It's a very long process.
So I actually wanted us to, I was hoping that we could just move and vote right now, that we should hire the School Board Association to develop a strategic plan for us. I think we are all in agreement, and I'm not saying that we should like start it right now, but I think if we can move and vote on that tonight, then we can get the process rolling so that we have a plan sooner rather than later. I really don't want us to start that process in the fall.
And all your goals and stuff, when you go through that and you brainstorm and then you go, and then the next thing and the next thing, those do become your goals and your benchmarks and like, it becomes embedded in that document. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant, only because I'm not super familiar with, A, what all that process entails, and B, what the cost of it is. I'm wondering.
It's approximately $5,000, they told us last meeting.
Okay. So I'm, I'm wondering if, can we table that until the 21st? And I'll send an email to Barrett and ask him to send us all like some details of the process and what it, what it entails and all that stuff, just so I can feel a little more comfortable.
Can I just ask you a quick question? I don't mind doing it, but does it help? Do you guys want me to send a draft and like the Excel sheet and like give you guys an idea of like?
If you have one, it's okay to share. I would, I would love to look at one.
Absolutely. I can blank the name off, it's fine. But I can show you and send you all the documents so you guys can take a look at step one to 10 of what it looks like.
And I think, you know, I'm generally aware of what a strategic plan is. I'm not sure what the process entails, and part of my concern is, especially in the fall, is that we have a lot of meetings that budget season rolls around. And if, you know, if this is something that can easily be incorporated as an agenda item on our existing meetings to check off some boxes, at least once we get rolling, I'm much more comfortable with that. If this is an intense process where for the first six weeks, you know, we have to have an additional two meetings every week to get it kicked off, then I'm, then my feelings will be different. So I'd just like to get some information from Barrett. I know they've been through it of kind of the 10,000-foot view of what this thing looks like before I go crazy.
So this is the information that they provided last time, that the entire process takes, that they put in about? So this is the information that they provided last time, that the entire process takes, that they put in about forty hours. The whole process takes about four to six months, costs five thousand dollars. They attend, there's, there'll be about four to five meetings, and they are each three to five hours long. So that is what we will be doing with them.
Yeah, and yeah, so I'd like a little more detail on that. I mean, I don't know. I'm not saying no, and I'm not saying I'm against it at all. I just, I look at finding, you know, three to five hours four times between September and December as difficult with.
And the teacher contract.
Yeah, budget season is my main concern, but yeah, we've got the RFP process and we've got negotiations. And so again, I just, I'd like to get some perspective from Barrett on his history with this and his opinion is all. I would like to do that soon. I would like to make, you know, some sort of decision at our next meeting, and I think that can be quick. I don't think we have to have another big, long conversation. But I'll ask Barrett to send whatever he sends me, I'll ask him to send to all of us.
It can be done. Not in a three to five, I definitely didn't sit there for three to five hours. It was more like an hour every other month in a nine-month process. Do you know what I mean? So I don't know how the School Board Association is, but it doesn't have to be that intense.
But the thing, if we, if we slow it down, then we need to do our goal-setting today or next meeting so that we have that in place to sort of hold us. I mean, I think in any event, we have to do that with the sort of timeline that we're talking about for strategic planning.
Yeah, yeah, I think we definitely need to do some at least one-year goals before we break for summer anyway. I mean, we could, we've come in in August or whatever before, I think, and done them at that end.
The, you have done work on your first August meeting, because that's usually the first week. The last couple of years, we've been talking about things I don't even wanna mention in August that hopefully we don't have to talk about this year. So that would be, that would be a whole meeting that you could probably devote to that as well.
I agree with, with you of getting more information, because even they're saying they're doing forty hours of work. We're probably doing eighty to a hundred in addition.
And I can't remember, I, I remember everything that you said, the numbers that they gave. Is that one, that's not one that they do though, right? They have a recommended contractor. Okay, so, okay, so I will, I'll take it as an actual item to contact Barrett and get as much information as I can to try to make at least myself feel more warm and fuzzy. And then we can, we can make this a brief item on 6/21 after the RFP presentations. And then we can, if you guys want to, I don't think we need to motion or anything. If you're all comfortable with what Amy said, if you want to send me whole ideas, I would say, you know, think about financial goals, think about educational goals, think about professional development-type stuff. And call, what do we always call it? Climate culture. And keep, you know, and try to keep in mind, I think, as Amy mentioned before, that balance that School Board Association is always talking about between, you know, direction and management and not getting into the day-to-day stuff. And then the other thing that I would say is when you're drafting those, I'm happy to throw them together and kind of present the findings next time around. Keep in mind how we could relate a goal of Patty's to the board goals, so we're all kind of swimming in the same direction. That makes sense?
Do we wanna try to put a date on the calendar as a, just in case we need it after the 21st? Because we're then into.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, or like Patty just mentioned, we do have an, is it August? Two? Is it that early?
I'd really like to, I'm not gonna say the thing we don't wanna talk about, but I'd really like to add an additional date just in case we need that August time for other things.
Can everybody take a look at 6/28, if I can see? That happens, I, that happens to be available for me? Okay, so then maybe sooner rather than later, also separately individually, look over the next few weeks and send me your availability, and we'll see if we can put something together.
Could we do the 29th?
And just, just asking the question for this, if, if the goal of this particular meeting were board goal-setting, is it required that we have Patty?
I don't think it's ever technically required that we have Patty. But I certainly would welcome her expertise if we can swing it. Only because she's been here a lot longer than any of us.
Do the 30th?
I can do the 30th.
Yeah, I can do the 30th.
I don't have to look.
Melanie's already got Tuesdays off.
I, I think I'm okay. I think I'm staying on days through the end of June, so I think I can do the 30th.
Okay, so we wanna say a tentative, hold the 30th if at all possible. Wait a second.
Don't start.
Oh no, I'm leaving the next morning. I might have to convince my wife to drop the dogs off, but.
The night before we leave.
Yeah. Okay, that was something. So now let's, now for something completely different. Let me get back to the agenda, and we've got Dr. Morris with some informations.
Yes, okay. I did just forward all of you an email that has the quote in it. To be perfectly honest with you, I was underselling this by quite a bit. The number is the same, fifty thousand. However, this, and this quote actually prefaces everything by saying, "Your existing rigging system is not up to current standards and should be replaced, upgraded by a professional theatrical rigor as soon as possible." We're only focused on phase one of this. They do cite the guidelines that would suggest that we are not up to standard. And they are, this quote includes a main valence and then the main curtain, border curtains, two sets of legs, an upstaged traveler, which is a curtain that moves in the middle, so you can actually, it helps facilitate, you know what I'm talking about. It helps facilitate scene changes. And then an upstaged cyclorama, most people call it a psych, and that is, we have one of those at TRS. It's a large white curtain that you can use to play, play lighting off of. You see it in theaters all the time. All of these include new rigging and tracks, and the hardware is a huge expense. Part of this is electrical pipes, part of this is the connections that they use to connect the fabric to the track in order to move it.
I have a question, so I'm linking a couple concepts. Do you know if this is energy-efficient lighting?
What we have in there right now is not energy-efficient to the greatest extent. We have, the most energy-efficient solution would be LED lights. Our current wiring is primarily halogen, and not only is that less efficient, but it generates a lot of heat and is less reliable. If you look at this later, phases three, four, it talks about a conversion and working through the electrical in order to convert everything to LED.
So the, when you mentioned, because the reason I asked is you said something, something electrical, something, something. So, so this would be like ready-made for that, you know, being phase one of an anticipated later phase?
Hopefully, at some point, when I was mentioning electric, the actual electric pipe that they use is not for conduit. It's just for support of hanging the stationary. But there are other phases here that are talking about converting that space to LED.
Got it, thanks.
You're welcome.
Looking at this as a preliminary estimate that they're giving you as of the beginning of March, should we give you additional funds beyond the fifty thousand? If you were to just look at phase one?
I would, personally, I would keep it at fifty thousand. There may be fluctuations. We've obviously seen that in other areas, but if that were the case, you know, we've assessed what our current curtains are, and they, you know, they're all at different stages of use, and some of those we may be able to get away with if we had to make cuts. The main curtain has to be changed, so.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve up to fifty thousand for the replacement of the PA curtain and rigging. Without having multiple bits.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving up to fifty thousand dollars outside of the typical quoting process for the replacement of rigging and curtains in the PE auditorium. They say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
End of sentence. Thanks for bringing that up. Sorry, I lost my agenda again. Okay, so any other questions, comments, concerns on current state of budget slash surplus and/or the cut sheet or anything else that we've discussed in the past two minutes, thirty minutes? Okay, so we've got a lot of eight E done.
I did just wanna thank Amber, I think is the person who has been producing the surplus report that we're getting. Yes, I like it very much. I'm glad to see this new trend of us getting it on a regular basis, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. It's awesome.
Yeah, good call. And on top of that, it's not on the agenda, but we do have the enrollment tracking sheet in our drive like we usually do too, and it's worth noting that we're thirty-eight students to the good currently. So that's always good news when it comes to budget time also. And then having that tracked and presented frequently is also very helpful. Okay, so eight E is goal-setting, both the process and the date. So we've talked a little bit about the date. I think where we're at is we're going to all send goals my way. Please do keep in mind the meeting rules. It should be a direct email to myself so that I can collate and present. Next time shouldn't be a, there should be no replies, reply-alls, any of that sort of thing. Talked about some of the topics to keep in mind when talking about those goals. And then, so on our work session on the 21st, we will have some amount of time to be determined to hear the proposals from contractors. And then we will begin with whatever time we have left our goal-setting process. We've got a tenant, we're, we're holding 6:30 for a possible meeting if we need it to continue that process. And also at the 6/21 meeting, we will have a brief discussion about if we wanna move forward with a strategic planning contract, I think is the right word. Is there anything else under eight E that we wanna discuss before moving on? We've got a couple other items that were added.
Just a reminder that I'm gonna zoom into that meeting.
Six twenty-one?
Yep.
Okay, then notes from the beginning say eight F is school safety, so Amy, if you wanna give us a little bit of background?
Yeah, I don't, I need to, you know, tell people that there have been a lot of, there's been a lot of gun violence, including in schools recently. And I don't, I'm not gonna have the exact words, but Governor Sununu said something like, you know, "Schools, look at your safety plans, make sure they meet thus and such standards." So I assume that Pembroke School District is doing that, and I would like an update and just sort of, where are our school safety plans and, you know, when were they last revised? And, you know, just sort of like an overview. Thank you.
Sure, so we had the good fortune a couple of years ago of having Jenny Jones serve as our emergency coordinator. And she really did a great job getting us organized, so we've always had safety plans. They've always been up to date. They are required to be uploaded to the Department of Education on an annual basis, so they are always up to date. We also have a great system in place for organizing all of our important information so that if there's an emergency, we have access to every student's information, all the contact information, building plans, classrooms labeled. We've done an active shooter drill here at Pembroke Academy, because it's our biggest building, to make sure that we can work with and communicate with emergency services. With a lot of Josh's help, we did homeland security, did the visits that were required in order for us to access that thirty million dollars that the governor referenced. So we were able to upgrade a lot of our systems, and that's how we got some of our locked vestibules. And our facilities are locked, every door is locked, no one gets in during the day. Everyone has to be buzzed in. We have the Identikit system that people have to register and put the sticker on. We know who's in the building at all times. We will, every summer, we talk about our plans and see if there are any updates. Each building has an emergency management planning team to keep all of that contact data up to date. With those grant funds, we also purchased new radios that were very costly that, that grant allowed us to purchase so that we have an emergency channel and we can communicate with fire and PD, which is phenomenal. And I have one in my office, so I keep it on the emergency channel. All of our administrators carry those radios. If there's an emergency, we are all switching to the same channel, that one channel that no one has access to, so that we can all communicate. So I think this district has done a lot of work over the past number of years, and I think we're in really good shape.
And I, this is, thanks for bringing this up. This is something I was gonna bring up today also. My idea to add to that would be to have Chief Gilman and Lieutenant Gaskell in to talk to us about their plan in the event of an emergency at all three of the schools. And I, I was aware that they had done the active shooter drills here. I think it would be who, everybody, and I know, I know teachers from all the other schools were here for those also. But I think being in those particular buildings for those drills would be more beneficial to all involved, including, you know, not just the teachers and administration, but also to the police and to fire. Because each one of these buildings is considerably different than the next, so that's just one of my thoughts. And then, you know, I know we've got the locked vestibules and locked doors and everything like that. But as a parent, when my kids were going here, dropping them off in the morning, side doors are popping open because kids inside are letting, you know, the kids that are running late in through those doors. So what can we do to negate that ability? I mean, I know those doors have to be open in case of an emergency, have to be, be able to be opened from the inside out. But this is what happened in Texas. So that's something that I think we have to, you know, facilities may have to look into to prevent that from happening here. And, you know, it, all it takes is that one, oh jeez, I recognize that kid, and he comes, you know? And that can't happen. Plain and simple. So I, I'd like to see in short order, I know the 21st is gonna be definitely out to have them in, but I'd like to see if we can reach out to them so we can hear what they have to say, what their plan is, so we know what to expect in the event that there is an emergency like that.
Leadership meeting today with all the principals and assistant principals. Leadership meeting today with all the principals and assistant principals. And we picked our date this summer to meet. And we actually have that on our agenda to invite them in to meet with us to talk about doing, you know, we obviously didn't have a lot of interaction with them over the past couple of years during COVID. We had no one in our building. But we did put that on our agenda for the summer. So we can update you in the fall if you want of what the outcome of that work was and what the plan is. We were meeting pretty regularly at the safety center. And Chief Paulson was instrumental in that. So we need to find a way to make sure that we start doing that again, too.
It's almost something I like to see before we get, have the kids come back at the end of August. So if we can somehow work that out, you know, I can even reach out to them and, you know, try to see what their availability is and.
We do have an August meeting.
Yeah. August, you know, we get a month off this year.
I do think it's a really good idea to hear from them and have them in. And it doesn't need to be a big deal, you know, just a couple of minutes, like, could you give us your perspective on what's the plan?
Yep.
I also have a question, too. I think it's wise to, you know, confirm roles and responsibilities not in the heat of the moment. And obviously, I hope that we never have an active shooter situation in our school district. But if we were to have an incident like that, my understanding is that, again, going back to the School Board Association meeting last time, that is a day-to-day management responsibility of the school leadership, right? So, you know, like, the news reports are coming out on WMUR, you know, it's happening, right? The one call goes out. I don't know how it would actually happen, how I would find out as a parent or a school board member. But as a school board member, we have no role that day, right? That's correct?
Yes. And we do have, all have roles and responsibilities. We've gone through incident command trainings. We all have our yellow vests that we don as soon as there's an emergency. We all, we have practiced the one call now. So as part of our drills, we've actually stood there and drafted language. So we do have all of that covered, yes. And you will be notified by a one call now, as quickly as possible.
As, as, at the same time as the rest of the community?
I would typically make a phone call to the chair. If, if time allows, we, it depends on the emergency and how much time we have on our hands when we're dealing with whatever's happening.
I wouldn't expect any sort of special. I wouldn't expect any sort of special treatment because if we don't have a role that day, there's no, I want you to be, you know, doing the other more important things on the ground at that time.
First, yeah.
And I think, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, John. I think in those, with the one call now, we all get that right now. So, you know, I remember vividly at 5 o'clock when my phone's ringing to tell me there's no school. So that doesn't concern me so much as being informed because it will come through immediately. Because I think that's something, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's something that would immediately happen. You know, it's not going to be like, okay, we're going to see what's going on first and evaluate. It's going to be like, okay, there's a big problem.
Yeah. And that's something that we talked about and practiced, talked about in our trainings and practiced during drills, that you really need to communicate. It's really important, even just to give an update along the way. And that was one of the, one of the, when Paul was still here, and we stood there actually helping each other write down what we're going to say, trying to do it in the moment, to have that practice, to let people know, you know, what's, as much information as we can, when the students are safe, what's happening, reunification, all start to finish, so that people know that what's going on. The instinct is for, is to rush to the school, and that's the last thing that we want people to do. So.
Just some clarification, not clarification, use more information. Police did have a, an event at our school, a training that the staff were not there. It was on a Saturday morning. I went in and I was able to witness how they go about the business. So they got, you know, obviously, there's personnel changes and all that stuff on a regular basis. But the police did come to our building. We do all, all three schools have a command center that we can go in, we can shut the doors and lock ourselves in there. And we have big screen TVs and we have phones and we have actually solar-powered monitored cameras. We also, a number of years ago, had, well, two things have happened. I had the police department do an actual, with staff, actual shooting event where he broke into the school with a Nerf gun and actually opened doors and shot. Very traumatic event for staff. And we learned, you know, a number of things. One was kind of the old-school way with don't run, and everybody hid in the corner. And that was one part of the drill. The second part of the drill is run like hell. And so staff will really be able to see, that was very, that was very powerful. The other thing the police have done with us, and of course, COVID got in the way of everything, but they've also sent undercover cops into the building to see if they could get into the building during the day and time us to see how long it takes us to identify that's a stranger in the building. So we have done those things. And I think it's important for us to continue and look at those. And it is helpful because more information and more training makes you feel better about what's going on.
Yep. That's helpful. Thank you.
Oh, give a shout out. As chair, I've got some visibility on a few more things now and then. And I have definitely seen that we do have a very good relationship with the PD. And I thank the chief for that. And we, you know, like, like Mr. Marson said, definitely want to keep that relationship going and those trainings coming. So, yeah, it'd be great to hear from him. Okay. Anything else to be said on the school safety issue right now? Okay. Then the other addition was superintendent evaluation. I'm not sure exactly what you mean, Amy, and I'm not sure if we, depending on what you mean, that may need to go non-public.
So the, at the School Board Association training last meeting, they mentioned that even though Patty is employed by the SEU, that this board could do an evaluation of her. And I thought that this board should do that. Nothing fancy or major, just a brief conversation because she hasn't had an evaluation done in a long time. And I'm not sure where we're at with putting the steps in place for her to have an evaluation done by the SEU board. But I'm concerned that that might not happen until the end of this coming school year, you know, like June of 2023. So I think it would be really wise to just have a, you know, two to five-minute conversation where this board could share input and feed back and have a conversation with the superintendent tonight.
Right. So I do believe that would be a non-public. So we can add that if people desire. Thoughts? Opinions? Anybody?
I'm not sure I want to add it to non-public tonight. Like, I feel like we should think about that and not just do that off.
That's where, that's where I'm struggling. I, I think I'm picking up what you're laying down as far as we need something to be done. So we have something on the books. But I also struggle with, like, we don't have formal goals to compare against or anything either. So I'm not sure. I don't know. It's up to everybody. Go with the flow on this.
I'm kind of the same because I understand where she's coming from, and I think it's important. But every performance evaluation, there's been like a standardized form and a self-evaluation has been done first, and you meet together and compare them to get, like, we don't have anything to go on. So I, that's my concern.
Can I make another? I just want to clarify. You said a long time. And I think that's a really, really, that's a really, so broad statement. So can we say since prior to COVID? Three years?
I'm kind of, I'm with Melanie on this. And my thought was, you know, what I was going to do was go out and investigate superintendent evaluation, you know, and I know Barrett said there's no one-size-fits-all, and some of these are, you know, garbage and everything like that. But if I do, you know, if I do my, you know, some research and, you know, some other us do that research, too, I think we can come in with a good idea of where we want to go with it using, you know, just general templates. And I, I'm not prepared to do that tonight. And I think that's some information that we should all maybe kind of take in before we move forward with it. So.
So just to give you an update, the work of the executive board last year, of which Pembroke's rep wasn't attending, so you may not have all of that information. But the executive board had intended to do, have Peter and I write goals. So work with each of our districts around what goals you have for us and things that you're looking for. And then also, each of us work on an SEU-wide goal or two. That work is to be done in our individual boards. And then the rep is Jean, right? I think. The plan was for the rep to bring that information back to the executive board and organize it through that group so that each board had their own way to give input and work with superintendent. I'm assuming that that's going to pick up when the board starts meeting in September, but just so that you have that background.
Wonder, I'm going to propose something, see if it makes sense to people. So we've got a discussion of our goals coming up with a potential additional meeting to finalize those. I think we should have in the back of our heads, goals for Patty that go along with those, like I said before. We do have an August meeting, which is before school starts. Could we earmark that meeting for the PD to come in and have a brief conversation with them? And then use, do a, a public session agenda item there where we discuss, and maybe we'll do this in reverse order from what I'm saying. But do a public session where we discuss what our goals for Patty are for Pembroke School District for the year, as well as the interval at which we're going to, you know, do, Barrett suggested six-month check-ins or whatever. And do a non-public session where we have a general discussion of, I think, kind of what you're, what you're driving at tonight as far as like, what things, going into this, what things do, if we have thoughts of areas that we're going to watch for improvement, things that are on our minds that we want to, you know, throw out on the table type of thing and, and get that. I'm thinking if we, so if we have our goals now, if we talk about this in August, it brings our goals back into focus. And it puts the conversation of Patty's direction just chronologically a lot closer to when stuff starts again. So that's what I'm thinking, but this was your topic. So I would definitely want you to weigh in and.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's all fine and good for, for forward-looking in for next year. You know, I think that there are a ton of basic, uncomplicated, you know, goes along with any job things that we all could cover. Not so superficially that it's really just merely a box-checking exercise like right now, tonight, but that we all could cover right now, tonight, because we've been at a bazillion meetings together this year and spent a lot of time together. And, you know, we can all speak to attendance and, you know, punctuality. And I mean, there's, there's just a lot of things that we can say right off the top of our head. And so I think we're selling ourselves short and missing out on an opportunity to just get something done and kind of overthinking it and letting the perfect get in the way of like, just getting something done. But, you know, the will of the board is what it is. So that's what I think.
I have another thought. I think that when we're working on our goals, some of those goals are going to come from things that need improvement, which may also have Patty as part of those. And that can be part of the discussion. And some of that is goals that we're not going to need to look at because Patty has done really well with those, and that can also be addressed. So I'm wondering if that conversation can be part of the goal setting as far as looking at this year and the now. And it gives us another two weeks to think about that. And then we look at August and moving forward.
Great. Others?
So are you essentially saying we would do what I'm suggesting we do tonight, but we do it next meeting?
Yeah, some sort of.
Yeah, I think that's a great compromise. I'm very eager to get something done this year.
Everybody cool with that? Okay, so. Yes, we'll, we'll put it after, I'll sort out the agenda, but it'll definitely be after the RFP stuff. So we can get our guests in and out in a fairly timely manner.
And if it's not the 21st, the 30th, because it will have.
Right.
Weaved into that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Anything else on that topic? Before we move on?
Thank you.
Okay. Then we are back to everybody's favorite agenda item, policy. Seven H. Oh, it got rolled up into E, so we don't need it anymore. Okay, so we have some old ones. Social media is still kicking around there. That's a thing that I think might come up in goals because I think it was one of our goals last year. It's not been addressed, but it's something that I would like to put some guy, some guardrails on in our discussions of goals next week or next time, so that we can make it actionable. I'm going to use a buzzword. But I don't, I don't, I don't think we're ready to go there tonight. But GBCD, background investigations, is that the one where we were talking about how many, the threshold where you guys need to review? Okay. So I'm on board with that. Does anybody need a refresher on that one? Are we ready to take action on GBCD? If anybody's ready to take action, go right ahead and make a motion.
Make a motion to approve policy GBCD background investigations.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Great. Then all in favor of accepting GBCD background investigations, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. The other one that's been here for a minute is KED, facilities or services grievance procedure.
I have stuff on that one. Couldn't print it. I can give it to Patty. It's not big things. It's just like, in one, it says any qualified handicap person. Just changing the language to like, any eligible person or persons, just being a little more.
Okay, can you?
I just did it. We talked about it. I think Stacy was going to look at it, too. So they're basic, I can give it. It's just grammar and coming up to the times.
Is it easier? Do you want it or do you want to have her email it to Kathy?
I can take it. I will be happy to edit it. The last update the School Board Association did on this policy was 2006. So the language is very outdated. So that's great. And I will take that and make those, redline that for you for the next time.
Right. And we don't usually do much for the first readings, just awareness. DJB purchasing policy is on there. And do you want to speak to that one?
So the purchasing policy, we're bringing this forward to all of our boards because when we were audited for our grants, the threshold for quotes for the federal flow-through funds is $10,000. But because your policy is $5,000, all our auditing was requiring all this extra documentation to $5,000 because you have to go for the most restrictive. So we're putting this on all of our board agendas and looking to move forward more to that $10,000 threshold, which, you know, this policy's been in place for a while and $5,000 doesn't get you very much right now. So that's what we'll be talking about with this policy.
I have a question on this. Is this something, like in our normal course, first reading today, second reading 21st, June 21st, the meeting on June 30th is, is an if. So we might not have this policy changed by next school year? Is that a big bummer for you?
No, I think that's fine. As long as, as long as we can get it done. We do start purchasing a lot this summer, but it's not the end of the world if we.
And we don't have to go through readings. So, I mean, if we're, if we're all sort of, I mean, we technically could amend it now, but if we. But if we wanted to, we, if we're all in agreement that $10,000 is fine, we give Patty the instruction to have it redlined, bring it to us next time and we can take care of it.
Okay.
I'm inclined to that.
Okay, I'll have Amber take one more look at it and make sure that was the only thing that needed, that she was recommending. And we'll bring it next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, so that brings us to our second public comment section of the night. So we've got 15 more minutes. If there's anybody that would like to contribute, come on right up. Oh, there you go. No, you're good. Go ahead. We're flexible, Carrie.
I know you are. I know you are. Um, okay, Carrie Dean. I just wanted to make one quick request. On the May 3rd video is not, from the school board meeting is not on the YouTube page. Um, the 17th is, but the third meeting is not. Um, and that kind of piggybacks on my next thing with the me, with the minutes. Um, it is helpful to have, and I know, I'm sorry, Sandy, I'm going to keep you working as hard as you work. But it is helpful to have the detail because when the microphones are cutting out, if you are watching the video at a later date, it is kind of easier to follow along with the minutes once they're posted for the, in the board packets to kind of say, okay, that's what she was saying or that's what he was saying. Um, so that's just those things. Um, the second thing is I'm kind of more in, and I haven't obviously taken my treasurer's position yet, but I will be soon. Um, just to piggyback on the surplus amount, it would be helpful if the board could encourage Amber and Patty to um pay for the treasurer's, to do a, I'm sorry, the auditor, um, to do a treasurer's recommittal. Um, I'm under the impression from the deputy treasurer um that the reconciliation has not been done since June 30th of 2021. And I would appreciate clean books when I go into this position and be able to uh reconcile going forward. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber White, uh, Borough Road, uh, just a couple of comments. I am in agreement with uh Carrie about the minutes, that it is helpful to have as much detail as available.
Is it on? You might have to scale it a little.
I'm just.
It's terrible.
Just short and it never. Okay, how's that?
Better. Thank you.
So um, again, I'm in agreement with Carrie about the minutes um in the level of detail that are in there. Um, I personally don't have the patience to sit through and and watch the the live stream, um, which is why I'm here. But I do find it beneficial to read through the notes past the meeting. Um, and a couple of questions I have for the board just to consider is regarding the the old work trucks that I know that we are about to purchase. Um, what are we doing with the old work trucks that we're not going to be using, but they're still functional? Is there, is there a plan to sell those trucks? What, or what are they going to do? Are they just going to sit in a field somewhere? Um, so those are one thing that I would like the board to consider. Um, another question is regarding, and I have not researched the past minutes about this, but um the Hill School RFP, uh, do we have the students that support that expansion? I haven't, I haven't heard much of that. But again, I have yet to look through all of those meeting minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Working here. Uh, Pente Alto Bachelor Road. Um, I am on the energy committee, but I'm speaking here uh for myself at this point. As you go into evaluating um proposals for building conversions, we're entering into a period where flexibility is going to be extremely important. One item, whatever source of energy ultimately is used to heat the buildings, I would urge very careful, that you carefully look at the temperature that the heat is being delivered. Um, I have experience with a system that we were able to get the temperature of delivery of hot water in this case down to 140. But the dishwasher, to bring up an issue, was set to run at 180. Uh, it had a booster, so they figured 170 would be fine. And the end result was that the condensing furnaces, the boilers, wouldn't work as condensing boilers. Um, and had to be replaced because the plastic pipes that were coming out of them were turning brown because they were running too hot. It's important that whether we're using solar thermal as a delivery system, uh, heat pumps of any type, thermally driven heat pumps, electrically driven heat pumps, uh, stored energy, condensing boilers, that the system operated as low a temperature as possible, as much of the time as possible. That gives you the flexibility to change and augment the systems that are put in today as the needs vary going into the future. And uh I look forward to being able to uh work with you folks if there is anything I can do um uh with evaluations or second opinions or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Only two people left here. Anything? All right, then we'll move on to everyone. We appreciate you being here. Um, so we do have.
Andy, I have a question.
Sorry?
I have a um, just request we take up that conversation. That an agenda?
Yeah, it's just, we don't need to actually take action. We just.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, okay, so informational items. Okay, so then we do have some appointments and resignations. And um I need to know if we need to go into non-public session regarding any of those.
I do not.
I don't think so. Is Patty going to clarify?
Yes.
The positions?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay.
Just recall this, and I should have said it earlier, but there was one of the cover letters that was to the wrong school district.
Yep. Oh, I'm going to.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So we're good?
I may do that now?
Okay, yeah, let's go.
Okay, I'll start with that one because that, I know that's confusing. So you're, you'll see cover letters that were addressed to other schools in our SAU. It could be another town. So we have the same, um, we have one place that those applications go. We have one account for the SAU. So we have been stealing from each other cooperatively. You know, shy jester, oh, I had a reading, I had a reading specialist opening. I hired one, I had three. You might want to look at my two. So we all get them together and we, we um tend to use those applications in more than one school. So it's not a mistake on the part of the applicant. It's because they do send them to one place and then we all um share them, if that makes sense. Um, so we do have um one nomination for the Hill School. We have a nomination for Pembroke Academy Science. And I do want to clarify, um, the math position will be for Three Rivers School, but we're making a shift and I just want to make sure you know what's happening and that you're aware of that. We did put in, um, I submitted the grant about a week ago, the S R three grant. The first activity we put in for was a math coach for Three Rivers. We used to have that position. We lost that position. We were unable to fill it. So it was eliminated from the budget and that's been an area of need ever since. And with the COVID grant funds and the direction to work on student learning loss, that qualified for um a grant position. We have a current eighth grade math teacher that wants to become the math coach. So we're actually filling her position this evening. Um, the person that we hired is fully aware that the S R grant is for two more years. So she knows that when she's taking this position, if the math coach position does not get put back in the budget, that she could potentially be out of a position. The eighth grade um teacher that's taking the math coach knows that she's going to get her classroom position back if the budget. So everyone is clear on the same page. The activity came back um pretty quickly approved. So that's really good news for our S R three grant, that all of the supporting documentation is now accepted. The first activity has been approved, so the others should go um smoothly. So just wanted you to know about that shuffle and why we were making it.
Okay, um, do we have a motion on the three appointments?
Motion to accept three appointments uh as described by uh Superintendent Sherman.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion that would not be non-public worthy? Pretty limiting. Okay, then all in favor of approving the three appointments as presented, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. Um, let's see. Oh, I was going to ask if you wanted to add this. This was in our drive.
Oh, so yes, so the transport, he's showing me the Dale Transportation. So we um had had a conversation as a full SAU board about continuing to look at our own um transportation. I think it may have been Amy that asked to have what our current cost is so that we would have something to compare. It would just kind of be refreshed in that folder. So that's why I put the the transportation contract in there for you to.
Thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Okay. Um, so as we've mentioned a couple of times tonight, our next scheduled meeting is June 21st at 6:30 right here. We'll be hearing from um companies regarding the RFP for Hill School. And we'll believe, it sounds like we'll be doing some goal setting. Um, so stay tuned for that and we might.
Can I just ask a quick question related to the um hiring we just did? Um, just pop quiz. Sorry to put you on the spot. How's it going for hiring? Like, how many open positions are left?
Okay, someone's doing a happy dance. Hi.
You're not on, I don't think.
Um, John is all set now, but uh Dan, we've had a little bit of difficulty with math. We've had um two candidates that have either withdrawn or um taken other positions. So we're still at the, at the, um, we're not giving up. Um, we, and they're, they're kind of chuckling because that, that applicant had originally applied for math at the high school and Dan thought he was well set. So John, John took the applicant and.
It's dark time.
It's dark. So we're not going to give up on looking for, there are so many. If you've heard the openings around the state, um, our administration and our teams have done a phenomenal job getting postings out there right away and doing early interviews and hiring. And have, I've had so many interviews that people have praised the teams in our schools and that they have chosen our district over other districts to work at. So I think that they should be commended for that, but we do still have an opening.
Thanks for the update.
And these uh two positions were ones we already approved, correct? Didn't we do two math teachers for PA?
Um, yeah.
We, we had um two math teachers leave and we had a position that we didn't fill last year.
Okay.
So three open positions, we've already filled two.
Okay.
Very excited about that. We filled a science position, which is also very challenging, so excited about that. So we still have that remaining outstanding math position. Still working on that.
Okay.
Have a long-term English uh maternity leave position. In my experience, it doesn't, it's not beneficial for us to advertise that too early. As someone commits, then they get a full-time gig, they back out. So uh we're, we're posting for that shortly.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just thought of this, um, but we did some, um, that we were able to attend the Eddie's Dinner this weekend. Um, I just wanted to kind of like shout that out. Um, the RIC Academy given was not something that was necessary. Um, Eddie's gives awards every year to elementary schools, middle school, a K through eight school and and a high school as the school of excellence for the year. RIC Academy was in the running and was extremely close to winning um High School of the Year and has been encouraged to apply again next year. Um, but that committee that was here was um extremely impressed with the competency-based learning that was being done and went back and petitioned that organization to to award this special recognition. And I think the part that maybe has not been said yet is we also had a language teacher um win, language teacher of the year. That's not really what it's called, but, but yeah, New Hampshire Language Teacher of the Year, basically. Um, so she was honored that night too, so.
Who was that?
Madame Colley, Colley, yes. Um, and we had no less than seven Teacher of the Year candidates this year. So very well done.
Hooray.
Thought Melanie was going to say something. Okay, um, if nothing else, I will accept the motion. Oh, yeah, okay.
I think that that's really important come March, that we highlight these things and the pictures that I saw spattering on Facebook. It would be great to to show, you know, the the accomplishments. So let's not forget about this come March.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thanks, everybody.